It's 6:31, everyone. We're going to open up our public meeting for a site plan application for 536 North Main Street, map 205 parcel two for Taco John's restaurant with a drive-thru. Would anyone want to present this?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I am William Murray with Places Associates. If I may, I have some supplemental information. Signage.
Signage, good.
Yeah. I got plenty.
Okay.
Got ten on me. So I apologize for the delay as part of the original application. But it gives you a pretty good feel for all of the interior and the exterior signage that's going to be proposed for the project. You can see it mimics what we have shown on the plan. And it looks fast food-y.
Bigger, bolder, better. Bigger, bolder than...
Okay, if you want to present the plan, where around...
Sure.
Yeah.
May I?
Sure, please.
So what the building is facility, it's, it used to be Jay and Phil's Glass Company. It's vacant now. And the plan of action is really just do an exterior modification cleanup of the exterior, which a lot of the signage and air potential plans show you about. Of course, they're going to cut the inside and convert it to a restaurant. We're really not making any substantial changes to the outside of the site. The plan of action is a one-way circulation loop around the building with a left and a right turn exiting. We have a dedicated drive-through lane that has more than five spaces for stacking. We have twice the required number of parking, required parking, because we are a pretty small building, under 2,000 square feet. We're required to have 10 spaces. We have 20 spaces plus the five parking. We're really not changing any of the drainage characteristics. We're leaving the pavement pretty much as is. We're sealing it, striping it. We're going to be treating the runoff just by retrofitting the cache spaces. So we didn't get any drainage calculations. Pre versus post are essentially the same. We're doing a little bit of landscaping in the front of the building, which maybe takes a couple hundred square feet of impervious and makes it grass. So for all intents and purposes, we're not saying anything is any different. The employee parking is anticipated to be back here. There's an existing dumpster enclosure that's falling apart currently, and it has a concrete pad. And we're simply going to resurrect that. It's got six-foot tall fence, dual-winged gates, so we're going to put up a chain link fence with the vinyl slats, either brown or black, to make sure that it's opaque. We show on the plan a single handicap space. Because of the number of parking spaces, we only need a single handicap space. And there really is no other place to put it, because this parking here, Wendy's is right here. And this parking here is pretty steep, and I can't make it work with ADA requirements. So we're putting a single space here, drive-through, a couple of parking spaces, employee parking to the rear. We have unloading and snow storage, and far more snow storage areas than we need. One of the things to know about the loading and unloading is that because this is a fast food restaurant, they will not be accepting deliveries during peak hours. And that's a pretty standard thing. Maybe some of the larger fast food chains don't do that, but these kind of fast food chains will not accept during lunch and dinner hours at all. The number of employees is eight to 12, with a total of no more than 40 throughout the course of the week. We anticipate the hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. till midnight, mainly because they do want it to be open for breakfast tacos and those kind of things. Pedestrian circulation, currently there are two sidewalks that come up along that way. What we're going to do is put a singular sidewalk coming to the straight, straight front of the building. What is currently a glass enclosure is going to be removed, but it will be replaced with an overhang, so that there will be some seating, exterior seating under the overhang. Concrete patio, we do show it bi-direct over here. And all of this is pretty much low-maintenance landscaping that'll have some irrigation to move the year around. We have a single parking space that exists in the front offset. It currently exists there. We're reducing the impact by striping this and then making sure that we have nice large parking spaces open in that direction. No change to the utilities, except for there's going to be a grease tap trap required underground of buried chamber. And that'll have to be retrofitted, because the existing sewer manhole is welded shut and couldn't get into it. So when the contractor gets there, they'll pop it, and then we will have to figure out that design. But that's going to be required by the Board of Health, as well as traps inside. We gave you a site lighting plan, and we're lighting it really from just four different locations. And it all shines inward. There's an apartment building here. We're showing a whole row of arborvitae along the back edge. There are existing trees in this area, and this is a defunct delicatessen Italian restaurant. And that's all paved, uniformly paved across. There are jersey barriers that kind of separate the two. And I guess principally the jersey barriers were used because the apartment complex kind of extends their parking into our site, so we're going to resurrect the barriers along the property line. We did include a traffic impact statement by a professional engineer. Because of this North Main Street is such a busy road, and you've got stoplights here, they found that there's minimal to no impact, because we're just a little fast food restaurant, not, you know, a large shopping mall. And I think that's fine.
Curved cuts are staying where they are?
They are, yeah.
Official curved cuts?
This curve cut is more than 24 feet allowed by your regulations, but it exists. We don't want to dig up the sidewalk, which is relatively new and has the handicap markings and things like that. So the curved cuts are going to stay exactly as they are. We're not going to touch this sidewalk at all. All the construction, new construction, is focusing simply around the building. And I forgot to mention, we're going to have a concrete walk around the building, except that the drive-through, which will protect out.
And the drive-around lane will be clearly marked?
Yep.
And wet on the lanes?
Yep. Painted words and arrows.
Can I ask about that handicap spot? If I understood you correctly, that someone parking in a handicap spot has to walk through the drive-through lane?
No, no, no. Well, they have to walk across, yeah.
Yeah, across, just across.
There's no other place to put it. I can't touch it up against the building.
Yeah, that seems kind of dangerous.
It's the only level spot on the site that we can access.
I understand what you're saying. You're asking a person who's already mobility impaired to then have to walk into traffic in order to get through, walk across traffic in order to get there. That's...
There are a lot of those kind of circumstances in some of the other restaurants that we looked at.
That's troubling. There is a drive-through. You don't necessarily have to get out. I hear you saying about that, it's not ideal.
It's not ideal. I don't question it.
But there won't be an egress to the other property?
No.
Or there's not one from the Wendy's side?
No. Yeah.
And none of those big spots that you were making of the other side could be big enough to have that handicap spot?
No, it's too steep. It doesn't, it doesn't comply with the level criteria for ADA.
Got you.
It goes deep, so this is high, this is low. And then the only other place I put the handicap is back here, but it's not proximal to the public entrance, so that doesn't mean it is.
I think, all right. So I'll go through the department review comments before I open it up to the public. But Elizabeth, why don't we start with you? Because I think, other than the, other than the disabled parking spot, I think there's other concerns about the parking.
Yes. So I have a review memo dated January 30th, 2023. This is based on the revised plan set that came in on 17th of January. I included the technical review comments in here, because they were part of the background that we gave the applicant. I'll just kind of walk through from the beginning on my report as to how it complies with the plan. There was a landscaping requirement. The revised plan addressed my comments. I had a dumpster comment. The revised plan addressed those comments. I had a comment about loading bays. It looks like the loading bays are used for snow storage and for loading bays and for loading areas. So I'm just wondering, like, during a snow event, what, what's going to happen if you have, you're trying to load and you can't use it because it's filed with snow there? I had some comments about the pedestrian way. There's a section of the ordinance...
Excuse me for a minute. Could you mute, tell John to mute his phone?
John, can you mute your phone?
And mute yours?
Okay. When you want to talk, then you can unmute, but, okay. That sounds good. Thank you, John.
Me, too, by the way.
Thanks, Tom, but you're not making any noise.
Thanks. Tom, we know it's not you.
Okay.
So pedestrian way?
So pedestrian way, there's a section of the ordinance that requires that all pedestrian access ways do not create traffic hazards. And I'm looking at this, and the parking at the southernly part of the site does not have a crosswalk or pedestrian way to access the building. And this may be perceived as a hazard by the police department. I sent this to the police to have an evaluation, and they... I don't think they commented on that.
They did. Are the comments we have up to, up to date?
Yeah, you have them in your hack-in.
Police didn't, but DPW went building, did?
Yeah.
The parking plan, they, they only required to have 10 parking spaces, I believe, and they provide 20. And originally, the original drawing did not have adequate width for the ADA space, but they reconfigured it to include adequate width. Maneuvering lanes for parking at 90 degrees have to be a minimum of 22 feet. And then on the plan, it shows 10 feet of maneuvering. So that was something that I think the board needs to decide whether or not they're comfortable with that. The snow storage plan wasn't originally provided, but they provided it in the revised plans, and it's adequate. But if you're using the loading bay as snow removal, I don't know if you take that out, if it would still be adequate. Then there's another section, I, I'm just reiterating, because there's another section that requires that all parking spaces and maneuvering areas be suitably identified and designed to meet the standards specified within this ordinance. And a provision is made for safe pedestrian movement within the adjacent and adjacent to the property by installation of sidewalks. And again, I'm saying that the parking spaces in the back lot have no access to the pedestrian walkway. They did provide a landscaping plan from a licensed landscape architect and a lighting plan. This, we already talked about the loading areas. It's just a different section of the ordinance that addresses that. They originally didn't have bicycle racks. They're now included in the plan for the revised plan, so that's good. And then signage wasn't provided originally with the revised plans, but I think the applicant announced the signage tonight, so I did review that. Yeah, because it just came to the board. So those are my main highlights.
Okay. So the outstanding issues is snow storage, landscape is set, dumpster is set, snow storage vis-à-vis the loading bays, the pedestrian way, the parking and the maneuvering.
I would, yeah.
So what's the, so the, on, on restaurants, the parking spots are usually contingent upon the seating in the restaurant?
Yes.
That looked like, you know, well, well, I just read through that. The, I'm sorry, Carol, I didn't mean to throw out.
Well, the other, I'm just wondering, because they say, they're also saying they have, going to have between eight and 12 employees.
Right.
It's not, the way the ordinance is written doesn't require...
That's right.
Employee parking. It only requires for the seats in the restaurant.
All right.
And stacking. Requires stacking.
And the, yes.
I'm just, but, but you're saying, and what you're saying about the angle, it's 10 feet, it's supposed to be 20 feet.
Supposed to be 22 feet, and it's 10 feet.
I think it's 20, 20 feet instead of 22. Well, I'm just curious as to, you know, if, if the parking spaces...
The spaces are 10 by 20, but the width of the pile has to be 22.
Side of the building? If the parking spaces on the drive-up side of the building were angled, wouldn't that give you the appropriate backup? But you're trying to make it difficult for them, because you have two lanes coming through there.
The width from the back of the space to the curb is 22 feet.
But you're going to have cars that got there.
Those lanes are really designated for use.
Potential stacking, but yeah.
Well, you got potential stacking, you got people that are using the parking spaces, whether it's on that side of the back. You could, you know, have two lanes of traffic coming through there. I'm just saying, wouldn't it be easier? Because you're over the requirements to reconfigure that parking there to make it easier for them to maneuver without having to worry about those lanes. If those were on, on more of an angle, I think it would work a lot better. That's my opinion anyway. But it might, it might, I don't know.
I don't see an issue with that.
Especially with a little bit of extra space there at the front. I mean, if you tilt them all.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've kind of already got the angle built into it with that little curb rounding in.
It's kind of bad enough backing up into two lanes. You know, straight back is worse than...
The item about the walkway out back is...
Yeah.
None of the restaurants in the area, they all have back parking lots.
Staggered.
Like Wendy's has one here and one there. And there is no clear marked walkway. McDonald's down the street, I did the air review. And this is a ramp, it's a handicap accessible ramp, but it's there because they do dollies and things like that for loading. But the people that are parking back here, it's intended to be employees, and they certainly should know, you know, when they're walking into the building, that they're walking across the drive-through lane. I think that a dedicated walk is kind of...
So they walk up the side from side?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
There's only a door here.
Unless it's elevated, you know? Or only the edge of the property.
And then we originally had this as a angle parking, and that created just too much of a bottleneck there. So now we designate all this as no parking in this area and the accessible space there. As to snow storage, your requirements say that we need 5% of the impervious area. We did 5%, 5% of the pavement area. We did 5% of the entire site for the snow storage. And I've got the loading over here. Loading can shift ever so slightly. As I said, the loading is not allowed to occur during peak hours, and we have more, more and more snow storage on the site than we need. Because, you know, the intent is...
So where are the dumpsters? I mean, where's the loading docks?
Dumpster is here.
So where's the...
There is no dock.
No, where's the conflict, though?
Oh, right there.
Right here. So not some of that snow storage off the map? You still exceed the requirements and designate it just for, just for the vehicles?
Yeah.
Or for the deliveries, whatever you're using it for.
That's pretty easy change.
Because you'll still exceed the requirements, but don't wipe it all out. Hold on.
No, because it's the logical place to put it.
Yeah, because otherwise you're going to have to have a plan to bring it off-site. If it snows all for certain, it goes moving.
So just real quick, I looked up the aisle widths for maneuvering. If you have parallel parking, you'll need 12 feet. If you have 45-degree parking, you need 14 feet. You might be able to fit that in there, I don't know.
14.
If you angle it at 45 degrees, 14 feet. 60 degrees to, 46 to 60 degrees has to be 16 feet. And you have them at 90 degrees, so it's 22.
The cars would never be able to get out when somebody parked here.
That's what I'm saying. If they could ever get in.
Well, they'd use the drive-around lane, you know?
Well, it's kind of similar to the Dairy Queen that just, they have their, their stacking parking over here as well.
But that's nowhere near their drive. But Dairy Queen, that's nowhere near their drive.
I thought it was opposite, their, their drive-through is here and the parking is right over there.
Yeah, but it's quite a ways away, and that, that's not close at all.
But I don't, I mean, there's no issue making those angle parking spaces.
I think you can angle them to get them within the proper footage. Whatever degree that is, map it to the footage, you know? For the requirement. Because, you know, you have a lot of people that don't turn their necks when they knock out. I know a lot of those people. Not me. But, you know, if you got, you don't have the cars that automatically brake, you're going to go through two lanes without looking somewhere. So if you angle it, at least you've got a better chance of surviving.
Yeah. You know, parking count, as you said, is not an issue.
Yeah. You don't, you lose two spaces. It's not a, a whole row. That helps. Right.
So the angle parking will then address the maneuvering?
It could. I'm not, I have to see an engineer.
I think, what was it, at 45? It was 14.
14.
14, and what was the other?
46 to 60 degrees, 16 feet. If you do parallel, you'll need 12 feet.
12 feet, well, you don't have to do parallel.
No, I don't think that's...
No, so you're looking at 14 feet. You might, you might make it with that green show on there, too.
Well, the goal is not to dig any pavement up, but right to change the site dramatically, yeah.
And board, did anyone else have any comments before I open up to the public?
Did you want to do the department comments?
Oh, yes.
Carol?
For the record, thank you.
Conservation had no comment. The Department of Health said that more information on dumpster and surrounding fence. The Health Department wants detailed kitchen plan showing all sinks and grease traps interior and exterior. More information on seating. The Fire Department approves with no comment. The Building Inspector approves, but says the accessible space, the handicap accessible space looks problematic. The Assessor says he approves. The DPW Director says that more information is needing, needed. The location of accessible parking space in the middle of the entrance drive recommend moving the space to another location. A water and sewer clearance plan will need to be filed with the Department of Public The Police Department said that the traffic study was conducted and included, and they stated that for alarm systems installed, the owner and manager's contact information should be kept file with the Police Department and updated when changed. And that's what we had. I think that was...
So the information for the Board of Health is either already submitted or will be submitted through the building permit application, which, metric, you actually, I think, got some of it tonight. Some of the signage and things like that shows the details of the kitchen and those kind of things. And we're well aware that we need, because we're modifying the sewer connection, we need the sewer and water clearance plan with DPW.
Yeah, with the grease traps, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, I'll open up to the audience. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Either in favor or opposed or neutral? Okay.
Are we going to continue the hearing?
Do you want to continue it and see the parking plan? I think that's best.
So I move to continue the hearing until...
March, our next meeting is March 6th.
Well, do you, maybe they can adjust the other stuff in the meantime to some of the pop-up comments? Because we have some other review that still needs to be done on piece of cam today. And the lighting plan? We have a lighting plan?
Yeah, yes.
I'll need everything by the 20th of February for the March 6th meeting.
Should we finish?
Okay, great. So we'll...
Do we have something else on the 6th?
But the building permit stuff, that's not really me. That's the architect and the other group here.
Do we have something yet on the 6th?
On the 6th? No, I don't think we do.
Okay, so then we table it until 6:30 on the 6th.
Okay, and so planning director will review the signage.
I'll work with the building official on that.
All right. And the conditioner will address the parking configuration.
And the storage. Yeah, just...
And any other possible location for the handicap spot?
I got nothing.
It seems like you put in the other place that makes sense.
I know. Okay. So I have a motion to continue this?
What about the, I, I just curious, what about the, the green area you're at the front? That's pretty flat, right? One of the green areas? Now we put a ramp alongside the walkway?
It would, but I think that pulling a van in and out of either one of these would be a street, a really cross-trafficing street.
That's similar to our dear friend Armin's concern about pulling out onto, you know, the parking.
Yeah.
I think that's even worse.
Back and moving. All right, so you've got a motion. No, I was just curious.
Motion to continue it to 6:30 on March 6th. All those in favor, starting with Patrick? Roll call.
Paul Weiser. Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Tommy boy.
Jason Parry, excuse, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice board, you're right there. That's classic.
I'm going to go into the regular meeting. Call to order.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sorry. Sal Chaconi.
Yeah.
John Souza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Here.
Jason Parry, excuse, Dean Valier.
Here.
Carol Vittorioso.
Here. Minutes of previous meeting, November 7, 2022.
I move to accept the motion. Thank you. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry, excuse, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
The minutes of November 21st, 2022.
Again, move to accept the motion.
Motion made and second. Roll call, vote, please.
Patrick Perla.
I'm abstaining, as I was not present.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yay.
John Souza.
Yay.
Tom Carrigan.
Yay.
Jason Parry, excuse, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
And I move to accept the November 7th minutes.
December 19th.
December 19th.
Oh, December 19th. Excuse me, went all the way.
Okay, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Roll call, vote, please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yay.
John Souza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry, excuse, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Uh, abstaining, I was not present. Three point O, plans submitted, we have none. Four point O, old business, we have none. Five point O, new business, we have none. Six point O, communications. Six point one subdivision regulation amendments per the suggestion of the DPW from December nineteenth. Uh, we are to review and consider recommended amendments. I understand we will continue this. Jason was the subcommittee chair, for lack of a better term, on that. We'll continue this to March sixth under communications. Do I? We'll just. No, we don't need one, cause we never, do we vote to put it on? I don't think, it's a communication. Six point two subdivision regulation amendment timeframe for signatures on milars. And we are to review and consider recommended amendments. I believe we can address this with C D.
Yes. If you look at the email dated December twenty-second, seven, December twenty-seven, from Amy, attorney Amy Questle. She, um, noted that in our subdivision regulations, there's some incongruencies. There's one place in the, um, in the subdivision that says a miler has to be presented and endorsed within six months on the date of the final action. And there's another part of the same regulations that states that, um, the plan shall be endorsed sixty days from the date of approval. So I mean, bas- basically we go with the more restrictive, the least restrictive one, and we allow for six months. But it's, it's, it's confusing and it needs to be straightened out. So we need to, hopefully, I would think, remove the, change the sixty days and say six months.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Sure.
So we have to have a hearing on this?
Yep.
We do?
Yes.
Because it's a subdivision regulation? It's, it's not a zoning amendment?
Out of courtesy, we advertise it and we have a hearing.
Okay, so let's, let's, um.
It's a public, public meeting.
Okay.
It's a public hearing, not a, not a meeting.
All right, I, frankly, I, I don't, well, I think out of courtesy and it's what's air on the side of caution, we'll schedule it.
I move to schedule a public hearing March sixth.
Um, we have to get it in the newspaper?
Is it a hearing or is it a public information?
Public information meeting.
Public information meeting.
March sixth, six thirty-five.
So if we advertise, we have to get it in there two weeks before.
We have plenty of time, okay?
We can do it on March sixth, yeah?
Six thirty-five?
Six thirty, second.
Motion made and second, roll call, vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yay.
John Souza.
Yay.
Tom Carrigan.
Yay.
Jason Parry, excuse, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carol Vittorio.
Yes.
Uh, next, six point three.
What time did we say?
Six thirty-five. Six point three, appointment of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty-three.
We should be here soon.
Is it a ticket?
Oh, no, it's not. Oh, maybe, maybe.
What action?
A nomination.
Um, I think we do this under, can we do this under executive session? Or do we have to do this on the open? I mean, I have no.
I don't think it falls under any of the reasons for executive session.
Personnel.
Is it John today?
It's the first meeting. It's supposed to be in January, but we didn't have the meeting in January, so it's according to our.
I think we should all think about it, right?
I think we should all be present.
That's right, and I think we should all think about this.
Can I make a motion to remake, keep our current chair and vice chair until all board members are present?
An extension to the vice chair and chair until we have some time to think about this and have an intelligent conversation with all of us.
At least until March sixth.
March sixth.
Don't limit yourself. Yeah.
Well, John, when are you, when will you be back?
I mean, people should be back. People should.
No, back or not, it'll be.
Jason should be here.
He'll be ten.
He won't be here.
Tom will be here. All right, so we'll, I would ask that we, uh, extend the current chair and vice chair until the first meeting in which all board members are present.
You mean by phone or by?
No, by person.
By person. So may?
Yeah, let's go to the first one.
Do you want to make a nomination? You made the nomination that we can maintain the current one until.
Until, until all members are present to discuss.
What does that mean?
Then it gives people's times to. And, uh, refresh themselves.
And I want to hear speeches for people who are running.
That's right. People may not run. So.
Booster pins?
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. We have a second.
Second, oh, I made the motion?
No, have any motion, motion made, second. Roll call, vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yay.
John Souza.
Yay.
Tom Carrigan.
Here.
John, Jason Parry, excuse, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carol Vittorio.
Yes.
Okay, six point four, temporary modification site plan application for one thirty-five commercial roadmap five seventy parcel one Home Depot. For the board to determine if this is a minor or major modification and to vote accordingly.
Hi.
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 I'm Mark.
How are you? Where are you?
Yeah, I was here last year. How are you?
That went by fast.
Yeah, I know, right?
Is that what it is?
So, uh, we are looking to expand for the spring season, the selling thing. We did it last year. We had gone for a major modification. Was it a major modification originally? It got, it went, we had it in our minor though. No, no, the original went to, who didn't have any, remember? And then that was one, and then the spring one was a minor one last year, and then you asked that I come back every year. So last year, um, we, we complied with everything that was asked of us and we tried to keep it. I think a couple of people asked if we were going to, uh, make it smaller as, you know, spring went away and we did it. So we're just asking for the exact same thing. We're not changing anything. We're just asking for the same storage space, which I think was an additional forty-four spaces. And that was it.
No, it worked well last year.
And it seems, uh. Fire problems is okay?
Yeah, the fire department, um, he, he sent this. He saw that, okay. Yeah, so, uh, we work with John. He's, we talk to him anytime he wants to come in or whatever. The police department asked if we, um, send them a notice of who the manager is so they can contact us so we can, we can do that. Um, I think that was hit on this. Oh, and the conservation board asked that we don't have anything on the soil or on the, um, the grass, which we didn't do last year at all. And we make sure, I walk it every, I drive the building every morning and I walk it, you know, to make sure that we do that. We have to have, uh, the fire department, uh, every fifty feet, we have to have four feet open, um, for fire prevention. So we do that and we measure it, make sure that it's always, yeah.
No, it was great.
That's all I have, so.
All right, so we have two motions.
We have a waiver request first.
Oh, okay. Um.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Hey, for the parking.
John, you.
Yeah, John, do you mind muting?
No, no.
No, because when he does, it's why.
So, uh, the waivers for the parking, number of parking spaces?
Yes.
And we're reducing it by how many?
Forty-four.
Um, utilize forty-four spaces for seasonal outdoor storage sales for period of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to August first, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a motion for the waiver?
Second.
Motion made and second, uh, to approve the waiver to reduce, temporarily reduce the parking to down, to, down from, down forty-four spaces. Uh, motion made and second, uh, roll call, vote please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yay.
John Souza. Tom Carrigan.
Yeah.
Jason Parry, excuse, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carol Vittorio.
Yes.
And now I would move that we treat this as a minor modification.
You have to leave a second.
Motion made and second to, um, to, to, to consider this, uh, request as a minor modification without having to have a hearing, a full hearing on it. Um, mo- motion made, second, all, uh, roll call, vote please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yay.
John Souza.
Yay.
Tom Carrigan.
Yay.
Jason Parry, excuse, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carol Vittorio.
Yes.
And now we have a motion to approve.
Motion approved, second.
Motion made and second to approve the modification.
The, uh, yeah, the seasonal modification.
Temporary modification.
Yeah.
Motion made and second, roll call, vote please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yay.
John Souza.
Yay.
Tom Carrigan.
Here.
Jason Parry. Excuse, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carol Vittorio.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll see you in there, right?
All right.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, six point five, one five five Tansio Road Site Plan Planning Board to discuss compliance with site plan conditions of approval. Updates provided by property owner in writing.
Yeah, the owner provided property, uh, updates. Um, and they wanted to let me know that as of today, all of the cars have been moved from the property. I, um, I have pictures, but, um, they're my phone and I'm using that. Um, I think, I believe. Mr. Tully is here. And you have, do you have the pictures that you can show us?
Sure.
Can you, uh, go through the whole thing?
Um, so there was a.
I'm sorry, I didn't need to.
This, this goes back a couple of meetings, or a couple of meetings where, um, a letter was written as a cease and desist because they, um, there were issues over concerns of whether or not the paving had been done on schedule. But there's concerns that only eleven parking spaces were approved and there were thirty-eight vehicles on the property. Mr. Hannigan came to the meeting, I think it was December, and explained about the paving and the board said, that's fine, what you're doing. So there was no issue there with paving. But there was an issue with the parking and there was, um, some, there was some disagreement about that at the beginning, but we got a legal opinion. And the legal opinion said that the cars were not allowed to be on the property. So the building inspector wrote a letter to the owner telling him that yes, due to the legal opinion, you do indeed need to remove the vehicles. And Mr. Tully was very forthcoming in, in trying to get to compliance and he met by our meeting date. He met the, um, requirement to remove vehicles and I, this happened just at like four o'clock. So I didn't personally get out there and inspect it and I will this week. Um, but he took some pictures and he sent them to me. And I trust in good faith that.
I just remember in the history, that's all.
It's all right. Good to see everybody again. It's been a couple of years. It's been really hard because we built it during the, uh, the virus situation.
It was really hard to go up, get that project done.
So the only reason I had cars was.
Did you say your name again?
Oh, Shannon Tully.
And your address?
Uh, one fifty-five Tansio Road.
Thank you.
So, um, my plan was to have six buildings, which everybody approves. There was no one that disapproved. So, uh, they said I didn't pave it, but I actually did. The last one day of that, of the year was very fortunate, uh, so was able to pave it, which I planned on doing on the next building also. So the cars were only temporary. I didn't know it would cause so much, uh, of a challenge. Uh, but your cars came all of a sudden, maybe because there's a, something going on, but, uh, so I said, yes. So I told them, well, you're gonna have to leave. Can't have unregistered cars here. And so they did reluctantly and it took quite a while. So fortunately, uh, just today, you know, uh, we got most all of them. And I think there's two being moved right now, tonight, and that'll be it. That's all I had left was two. And, uh, so I didn't do it sooner. But I got the letter that says I have to move them or I'm gonna get fined. The letter is dated the twenty-third. So I guess thirty days gives me until February twenty-two or twenty-three. And, uh, so I'm okay with that, cause we should have it cleared out tonight. So, uh, is anyone, uh, is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Thanks for the, yeah, really, no, thanks for doing that.
I, I, I really, I, I'm happy with everybody approving everything a couple of years ago and I, I don't want vehicles, really. I want buildings. Okay, but, um, the land was just flat, ready to put something on it, get some rent, but that's gone away. So now, uh, I do have one question and, uh, kind of at your mercy, but I don't know if you're kidding in this, if you can retract the cease and desist thing because,
Yes.
I got a letter saying that it was okay from the building commission, so.
Yes, but we removed that. I already.
Vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do a formal vote for that and then.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but he needs a formal write.
Yeah, but let's, let's do it if he's.
Right.
Asking for that. All right, does any, does the, any, anyone else have any comments around Mr. Tully?
No, I, you know, I think that's great that, you know, I, we understand, believe in it. It became an encroaching problem in the whole city. It wasn't just you.
So you see motions.
So you want to make that.
Yeah, make the motion. Cess and desist was for fifteen, uh, one fifty-five Tansio Road.
And, uh, let's authorize Elizabeth to, uh, I don't, to send, drop the letter.
Drop the letter, basically telling him the decision.
Right, that, uh, so move, yeah, yeah.
Okay, motion made and second, um.
Want to put a date on it as today or whatever, just to give them.
Is that possible to put today?
It's gonna say the vote was taken today.
Okay.
Okay. And, um, cause yeah, we, yeah, we, cause we terminated this cease and desist today. Okay, so is a motion and second, roll call, vote please.
Patrick Perla.
Yeah.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yay.
John Souza. John, are you there?
Oh, he's finally muted.
John, you can unmute now.
Briefly.
John?
Put the sandwich down.
John, can you hear?
Well, just.
Yes.
Yep, do you?
Roll call, vote, your name.
Yay.
Thank you. Tom Carrigan.
Tom.
Tom?
Yes.
Jason Parry, excuse, Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carol Vittorio.
Yes. Okay, good luck.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Six point six, one seven seven one Lock Drive Site Plan Planning Board to discuss compliance with site plan conditions of approval. Updates provided by property owner in writing.
Thank you, great advice, everybody.
For this one, we got an email from the property owner, Mr. Xeris, or Mr. Xeris's son, basically asking that, um, they wait until they're, they're meeting with conservation over these issues and they want to wait until that concludes, um, before they meet with the planning board, before they update the planning board. And then we got a, we got a, it's on your, um, C, um, uh, email dated January twenty-sixth from Nick Cramp. He's the conservation agent giving you an update. So I don't know.
So basically the update?
No, there's no update.
There are some requirements that the conservation commission is asking the applicant to do.
Okay.
Um, but as far as site plan performance, we're not gonna have that update until after they're done with conservation.
So no action needed on that one?
So we need to continue this probably to March sixth.
Okay, we'll put it under communications.
Yeah.
Good.
Six point seven, Bay Street Subdivision Sawyer Way New England Land Company, planning board to consider declaring subdivision in default in order to exercise bond to cover the costs of creating an estimate for the cost to complete the remaining required infrastructure. Elizabeth, can you give us a quick history?
I'll give you a briefing over this. So we've been dealing with this since the fall. Um, basically we had a, a letter from James Haratunian, who represents, um, the developer, the, um, it's, uh, New England Land Company. And basically was asking if the board could just keep part of the money and then return the rest, um, and finish, um, the work. But the board looked at it and we did more research and we noticed that it was quite extensive, what work needed to be done. And, um, we looked at getting, we went ahead and got quotes from three engineers, three firms, to see how much it would cost to create an estimate. To determine how, how much it would cost to finish the road and to forgive and acceptance. But then after that, we got a legal opinion from Amy Questle, it was dated January seventeenth. It's quite long. She outlines the process of what we need to do in order to exercise the performance guarantee. And, um, she mentioned that it's not really, unless the city wants to expend its own funds, we can't use the consultant engineer to do the, to do the estimate. We have to use the DPW. So I went ahead and got an estimate from the, the DPW and that's in front of you. It's, um.
Hundred thirty thousand?
Hundred and sixty thousand.
Hundred and sixty.
Okay, sixty, yeah.
They, they itemized it out, but they didn't also include the deed, work for the deeds and the street bounds and the as-built.
The deed has no as-bills.
Yeah, so it's gonna be more than that. So essentially, the city's holding $84,000 for this, that's all we have. And that doesn't meet the amount of money that it's gonna cost to do the improvements. If you want, we can get into the detail about what we have to do if you want to declare the subdivision in default.
I can sum it up.
Okay.
Um, so that I'm not reading the things. So the first thing I, we've done, um, this, again, this is from the city solicitor, prior to engaging with the developer, we should first determine the remaining work to be done and the costs associated with each.
So that's incomplete, so we still need the other costs, just the as-bills and that.
That's right, so we should actually get every, everything, so that's the first thing.
Do you want to look mine?
Yes, could I, because I'm, yeah. But I, I have a question though, what does she mean that?
We have to have a hearing.
We can't, this can't be funded by the bond, I don't understand.
She says it can't be, it's not, it's not legal.
Yeah.
We have to use, we have, we have to use the DPW, we can't, we can't use, unless the city wants to budget with its own money, not the bond money, we can't use a consultant.
Okay, so then, once, once we, the city, so we, we need that to be comprehensive from the city's engineer. So then, once that's prepared, we have to send notice to the, the developer and the surety that the board, that the board is scheduling a meeting to consider whether the developer has defaulted on his obligation. This does not have to be a public, does not have to be advertised as a public hearing.
As a public meeting.
Right, then, at the meeting, the board should make it clear to the developer that the board is prepared to find the developer in default and to seize the surety. The goal of this meeting is to come to a mutual agreement as to the work to be completed and a timeline. If this is not reached at the meeting, or if an agreement is reached but is later breached, then we send notice to the developer and surety inviting them to attend a meeting at which the board, the board will vote on whether the developer is in default and seize the surety to complete the work. I also assume if the, if the developer and the surety do not respond, we can then at that meeting determine whether they're going to be in default. If the board votes to seize the surety to complete the work, the board must provide notice of default to the developer and the surety with a copy to the city clerk. And if the board elects to seize the surety and have the city perform the work, the board should be cognizant of the fact that the city simply cannot undertake work on private property, rather the city would need to accept Sawyer Way as a city way before completing and obtaining.
Or.
Before the work is completed or obtain permission from the owners to complete the work. The city must comply, also comply.
Homeowners or the?
The developer.
Developer.
If the board seizes the surety proceeds and completes the infrastructure improvements, the surety proceeds should be deposited into a separate account with the city treasurer and expenditures from the fund should be tracked, so the city was, could provide an accounting of the funds necessary. So the first step is, for us, is to consider directing the city's engineer or other capable individual to inspect the subdivision way and draft a report of the outstanding deficiencies. So, that's the first thing we have to do. I mean, he gave us a quick, what's that?
We started that with the DPW.
We started, but I think it needs to be concrete, comprehensive. With the.
Um, we do have a, before we move on too much, we have a, a letter to read into the record from a member of the public.
Okay.
Do you want me to go ahead and read that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, this letter is to the planning board, it's from Keegan Manchester of 61 Sawyer Way. It says, attention planning board, I'm in favor, consider declaring the Day Street subdivision Sawyer Way in default. As one of the first residents of Sawyer Way, I would like to bring the following to your attention. Good evening, my name is Keegan Manchester and I live at 61 Sawyer Way here in Limminster. My husband Tim and I were the fourth family to build a house on Sawyer Way over 10 years ago. As more houses were built in the street full of families, Tim began inquiring about the street being finished and turned over to the city. His communication with Mr. Gary Litchfield was not successful in that endeavor, and I know other residents also reached out to him to know about. Tim wouldn't even mow along both sides of the sidewalk on a regular basis, as there's never any maintenance done to the nearly 500 feet bordering the sidewalk. Tragically, my husband Tim passed away in 2020 after suffering a brain injury from a fall. While I understand the importance of the finished items to be completed, including paving and raising the castings, that I imagine will cost much more than the $40,000 supposedly being held. A primary concern is the dangerous drop-off next to the sidewalk. We have several children on the street, two of which are mine, that walk to and from Johnny Appleseed Elementary School and the bus stop every day. Of course, being a widow losing my husband the way did, I feel very passionate that this dangerous area on our street is addressed, made safe for all our residents. In addition to our primary concern for safety, the conditions of Sawyer Way are deteriorating with each passing day. The very thing kind of block top is constantly breaking, the few curbs that were installed are damaged, weeds and trees are overgrown, and there are large stretches of completely unkept areas, including poison ivy, horn's nests on the ground, et cetera. And during the winter months, when there's snow or ice, our children must walk in the road, the entire length of the street as the sidewalk is not maintained. And given that the street is not finished, the storm drains do not function and therefore the end of the street, adjacent to Day Street, gets flooded easily. This area regularly freezes, causing unsafe conditions as we enter and exit Sawyer Way, where our children get on and off the school bus. Moreover, there is no lighting, lighting or signage, so at night, when it is raining during the winter months, it is extremely difficult to see along the entire length of the street. One day, a few days ago, police officers were up at the end of the cul-de-sac where I live, and several commented that they had no idea the street even existed. Sadly, Mr. Heratunian is correct, Sawyer Way is an orphaned development. Our street is beautiful, well-mintained, family homes is deteriorating with each passing day. One day I am in support, once again, I am supportive declaring the subdivision in default. As a taxpayer citizen and one of the first residents of the street, I look forward to finally having some closure and nursing these conditions, and most importantly, the major safety concerns on Sawyer Way. Please know I speak for the entire neighborhood, and I will update them after, update them all after this meeting. I've included several pictures for those of you who have not seen been to Sawyer Way, please feel free to contact me at any time with questions or concerns, and thank you very much for your time. And there's some pictures um, that are in your packet.
Yes.
That you were able to see, um, and an email dated January 17th.
Okay. So the issue is.
They were in your last packet.
What's that?
The January 17th packet that you.
I think we.
It sounds like the DPW needs to finish, they started.
I, yeah, I think, but I think if we.
But if we make a formal request for.
Form, I think if we make a formal motion and second for them to give us a, but we should also put a timeframe on it.
All right, so I would move that the DPW finish the cost estimates for the entire project no later than March 15th.
March 15th?
March.
March 15th?
Oh, you wanted, you wanted to.
I think it's, yeah.
Yeah, let's go, yeah, absolutely, no, how about, no.
How about, what's the, what's the deadline?
Ten days.
What's the deadline for, for you to, um, get plans submitted before next meeting, the Thursday?
The 20th.
The 20th.
So, so, two weeks from today. You think that's gonna be enough for them?
I do too.
Maybe.
Yeah.
They were pretty quick to respond when I asked them the first time.
Let's save February 20th, so we can discuss it on March 6th.
Good.
Now, wait a minute, I'm wondering if we can jump ahead a skip, a step, hold on. Oh.
Well, let's build on this one.
We have to have a hearing, and I have to send a certified letter to the developer.
Well, that's my point, I'm, once the city, once the city's engineer prepares the report, the plan, so let's, oh, okay, so let's do two vote, two votes, so one is requesting the, when she says city engineer, we've timed out the DPW.
Yeah.
Right.
DPW.
Complete the, the process of, of cost estimates no later than February 20th.
Okay, do I have a?
Comprehensive. Esthetically, instead of just.
So that's um, right, motion?
Second.
Second.
Yep.
Roll call vote, please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
South Chacony.
Yay.
John Souza. Tom Carrigan. Tom Carrigan?
I think he fell in the pool. He's not there.
He's, he's gone. Tom is gone. Jason, excused, Jason Parry, excused, Dean Vayr.
Yes.
Carver Torriello.
Yes. Now, then, do I have a motion to authorize Elizabeth to send written notice to the developer and surety once that report has been submitted?
To move. Second.
Motion made, the second. Roll call vote, please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser. South Chacony.
Yay.
John Souza.
Yay.
Tom Carrigan, excused, Jason Parry, excused, Dean Vayr.
Yes.
Carver Torriello.
Yes.
And then if you want to schedule the.
The board's notice should include a copy of the report, this discussion can occur at a regular meeting of the planning board, the board is not required to advertise this.
So we don't have to advertise it, keep it under the communications. And we can do it on last Saturday.
Okay, we can do it on.
Just keep it under communications, I think.
Yes, and we'll do it, well, let's schedule it for March 6th to see if everything's been done and what, yes.
But it'll say communications are being scheduled, right?
No, I have to advertise this, right?
No, no, you don't.
Don't advertise it?
No, this discussion can occur at a regular meeting of the planning board, the board is not required to advertise this as a public hearing.
So under communications, just continue.
At this meeting, the board should make it clear to the developer and the, that the board is prepared to find him in default. And then there's a discussion about whether or not, but they're not going to, I, I anticipate they're not going to respond.
So if, so if we follow all the other steps and there's no response, then we have a way to.
Yes. So, but let's expedite it, because we can get two steps done before March 6th.
Great, okay, so I'm just gonna make a motion, we continue this until next week.
March 6th. Under communications.
So I'm sending a certified letter to the developer, telling him that he's going to be considered for default.
And the surety.
And the surety, whoever told him.
And you send a copy of the, of DPW's comprehensive report to them.
Right.
I'm happy to go through it with you when it's time to do it.
It's outlined in the.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, but use it out too.
Yeah, we'll work on it.
Yeah, hold on to that, I know you have it in an email, but.
Gee, that's a lot of work.
Um, all right, we're not done yet.
I know, I'm just getting organized. Organize some other cables.
Okay, direct this report.
All right, I have, I have three things for you today, they're, they're all, drop it quick. Some of you have already been doing your due diligence and doing your conflict of interest training. I sent an email out about this. I don't need, you can print out the certificate, but I don't need it.
I have it for work, so don't give me that.
Once you, once you complete the certi- certification, the clerk gets a notification that you did it.
Even if I did it with another entity? Well, yeah, maybe do it when I was with state agency, I had to do it.
I'll have to ask about that.
The only issue I have, Patrick, you know what I'm going to say, they changed it.
It's different this year.
It's different this year. And one of the things, at the ends of the main, because I just did it today, coincidentally, at the, at the end of the, of the training, they say, they have you click on which type of state agency you're involved in, so I did the one, and I'm assuming Patrick did too, for state government. But there was one for boards and commissions.
So I tell you this, I, I, I was wondering if you would have to go back and do both, but I was able to click, I was able to click the agreement on both the municipal and the state. And I think it was, I think they would, it was more of like just an overview of choice and not a part of the
Okay.
training in the sense that they tested you on whatever they were gonna test you on.
I'm not doing another one.
Okay.
I don't think you need to, because I was able to, I was able to print off an agreement.
You have to keep clicking it.
All three or any of them, three. Agreements at the end?
Yeah, yes.
And I did, I was able to do both, maybe there was nothing that indicated that.
Okay, so you're saying it's not necessary?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I know it's.
I just want, so I'll, I'll. Patrick brought his diploma with him, but I'll scan it and email it to you, you grow tomorrow.
Don't I get the emails from Elizabeth chastising you?
Put it on the agenda.
All right.
You brought your diploma? Mine, when I brought mine, it was all colored when I put the.
Mostly what I do is to avoid having somebody else bother me.
Yeah, I know.
All right, so. I have some educational opportunities for the board, it's a Saturday, it's March 18th. It's called the Cis and Training Planning Collaborative, they have different modules, different roles and responsibilities of the planning board. It's always a good refresher to go to that one, even if you've already been.
It's a tough date.
There's legal updates, different things, they haven't, they haven't, they have not published the program yet, even though it's so close to the date, they keep just sending me a save the date. But I've been to them in the past, this is the first one they've had since COVID in person, it's a, it's gonna be Holy Cross in Muster. So I'll be sending out more information about that, we'll pay for you to go. I hope that at least a few of you can attend. Even if you can only go for half the day, it's like, it's, you have a good breakfast and a good lunch. I've tried to incentivize you to come.
I can. You say hi, Slade?
Maybe John will fly out.
Sorry, John.
Yeah, fair, John.
So I hopefully, uh, more information forthcoming, hope you can participate. And then our site plan application form, we updated the, the note about the um, the minor modification. Is only um, a hundred dollars. As the board voted on that previously, so it was all updated.
You're right.
And that's all I have.
All right.
Motion. Second.
I already sent it. I just, whatever, I missed it, sorry.
You have a motion?
The United Public Work Program, oh yeah. Um, we sent out, Stephanie sent it out to you. They, what is the acronym again, U W, United Work?
U P W P, Unified Planning Work Program.
Yes, there's money, there's grant money available for transportation studies, intersections, we have one undergoing right now. And I, we should be getting an update from that one.
It's supposed to be done, I think, by September.
I'm looking forward to it.
So we do have one underway, but we can ask for more. So if the board wants, has any ideas for that, I need to turn it in by February 28th. I am, so read through that email, it has examples of types of studies that um, could be asked for. But it's free money, free studies, and um, why not, if we could do that?
Yep. So we, we forward a second one last time to my network service. That, that was the other side, where on, on Old Mill Road, where there's a one lane.
Oh, that would have a change.
Where you can't, you can't see one end to the other.
They should just widen each end so you're.
Or make it one way, or do so.
Or a light or. Because you have two ways both ways to try and get the other.
I know, it's just.
I know.
But it's a bad, it's a really bad.
Paul, can you email me about that one? Do you want me to recommend it?
I'm pretty sure we submitted both of them last year and they picked the first one.
We did, but we can try again.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, it sounds likely right, there's probably nothing that you can do.
Well, they won't look at it as a real, you know, traffic violation, it's like a bad side cut through, so they can't.
It's a street, it's a public street.
Yeah, but you can ask, but I don't see them spending.
You're on the street, you can't see.
You can't, it is bad. I was going to be a couple times last.
And you couldn't fit two cars through this bridge.
Juggler Land coming back onto Willow Street.
That's on Old Mill.
Lost the land. Yeah, that's a great bridge, though, that's a big.
Some people might refer to it that way. That's my, my way to, to get to Central Street.
You can't petition to have them fix Sawyer Way.
Yeah, there you go.
Our next meeting is March 6th.
All right, we have motion?
We have one.
We have second.
And we seconded it.
Roll call vote to turn.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
South Chacony.
Yay.
John Souza.
No.
All right, you stay on, John.
Tom Carrigan, excuse, Dean Parry, excuse, Dean Vayr.
Yes.
Carver Torriello.
Yes.